I'm bringing to do that now.
All right, I'd like to call the planning commission for the town of McCandless to order. First item on the agenda is a review of the Boulder Plan preliminary final subdivision application, 9220 Willoughby Road, new lots to be located on Harmony Drive. First item on here is a motion to accept the application for review. Do I have such a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, presentation and discussion. I'll turn that over to you.
All right, so we have got Mr. Dan Harrison right here from Tate.
That's right.
My memory is good. He is here to present this plan. I'll pull the plan set up in just a moment, the latest that we've got. This one is sort of a full land development application, sort of a simple subdivision in that it's basically they want to create four new lots, as the agenda says, on the Harmony side of Willoughby. So in that case, you can do certain things like on lot stormwater, but you still have to figure out how you're going to manage the stormwater in general, utilities, things like that. So you're not going to see anything like a detention pond presumably on this plan. It's a little sparser than some of the really thick plan sets, but you know, for the most part appropriate for this scope of like the subdivision. So unless anyone has any initial questions, for me, I think we are ready to call Mr. Harrison up and I'm going to open your two drawings that you sent over a couple of weeks ago. The way this works is we screen share them so that the public can also see them at home. Just tell me what to navigate around when it pops up on the screen.
Okay, sure.
All right, would you like me to bring up the subdivision plan or plan of improvement?
I think to lay things out a little bit. Okay, like they said, this is a plan for four lots along Harmony Drive. The property is located between Harmony and Willoughby, which is sort of between Island and Swift along Harmony. The four lots are currently vacant, wooded, and they'll just be single family residential. I believe it's known R2, if these properties are, the property in question in all these corners. So really it would just be four simple lots being graded. They're a little bit bigger than the minimum requirement. I think we could have been five years initially did, but after a little bit of discussion, we bumped down to four. They make the lots a little bit more attractive, but it gives a little bit more room for grading and improvement and it allows for on lot stormwater controls, which are definitely easier than something like a detention pond or a town or something for the community. So we've gone back and forth with Gateway a little bit. They wanted to see some grading plans and things like that, so I guess maybe now we can try those with some improvement. We provided kind of a simple, very simple grading plan for each lot just to show that the grading is sort of flexible, we can move it around on a lot a little bit if need be. Gateway wants to see a little bit more detail in regards to the driveway coming up and the slope, which is understandable. We'll provide that. More in color on the preliminary grading plan, just to show that a driveway with an allowable slope can be nice and go up to each house. There's also utility connections and stormwater connections that they wanted to be shown for each one. There's overhead utility lines and a storm sewer line that runs right along that part of Harmony, so the easy connection. There's also gas lines and underground electric. It's possible that there might be a sanitary sewer extension required. You have to go into a little bit more detail with MTSA and the same thing with most few waters because there is a sanitary line and water line that runs up along the south southern part of Harmony there towards the bottom of the stream, but they don't extend all the way up according to the math and the information that we received from those two utility companies. So we might need a little bit more detail with them on how to coordinate to extend those lines up for certain, especially the top of the couple houses. Other than that, nothing is to really change too much, especially with the different parcel that's up the hill located away from everything else and suffered by woods. But yeah, we still have a few things to go back and forth with Gateway. We just received a comment letter today from Dan Deisroth with a few items that were watered.
Yeah.
So we can, we'll work to address those. We still have a few things to be tied up, cleaned up and kind of finalized before we move for the final approval, but we're trying to move in that direction. If there are any questions anybody has about it.
This states final approval on here, but you're not going for final approval tonight?
Well, we just kind of, I would say sort of assume based on the comment letter that people have initially proposed before.
I can comment.
Yeah, would you like to?
Sure. I think the challenge of this plan is anytime that you develop off of an existing road, there's lots of challenges because as soon as we approve a recorded plan, people can sell lots and those lots, they buy them with the, they buy them with the intention that all the utilities are there and everything is there and available that they can immediately build a house. So I think our challenge is to make sure not to overburden this, but at least make sure that there's sufficient detail that when the plan is approved, that there's some guarantees for people that are buying these lots that they know what they're getting. So I think that we definitely need to know where your sanitary sewer is going to be because that's first and foremost. And the other, the other challenge is, and RJ and I have had this private discussion, is that although preliminary approval seems, you know, like, okay, no big deal, let's just give them preliminary approval. In Pennsylvania, preliminary approval is tantamount to final approval, with the exception of a few minor details that you need to add to the plan. So we need to make sure before we let them go through preliminary that a lot of these details are tied up. That's just what I've been told and Steve can chime in on that. I just want to be careful. I think that we, we know enough about Harmony Drive and I've talked to Jeff, our public works director, and I think we're comfortable that the road is in pretty good condition that we're not going to need any improvements to the road, but we do want to make sure that the, that there's stormwater connections that are provided to each lot, the sanitary sewers are provided and that all other utilities, if anything's going to be dug up as a part of this development, we need to make sure that those utilities are brought up and extended across the road to get onto the lot so that people can strictly tie them. That's what's done in a new plan of lots, as you guys know. So, and then, then I did put a question in there, you know, what about financial security? They are going to have to put a sidewalk in, so they're going to have to provide financial security for the sidewalk. We're going to probably have to have it for the individual sumps and those connections. And I think so there's going to need to be some ENS control here because again, as individual building permits come in, I also wanted to note on the plan that there will be individual, because I could see nobody, it's not all going to be rectangular houses. They're going to sit there, they're going to be variable types of houses. Everybody's going to come in with a different type of house to build. So it would be good to have each, at least that when inspections gets a plan, that there's individual site plans for each lot as they're brought in so that we have a grading plan, we know what they're planning to do. The driveway is not going to be too steep and, you know, everything else is worked out a little bit better. Again, it's, it's, this is a little bit unique and I mean, these lots might take, they might all sell at one time and be built or built over 10 years, who knows? You know, after they're, after they're recorded. So that's the challenge and I think.
What individual items does he need still?
He still needs the sanitary sewer figured out.
Okay.
We at least need to start the process with the planning module that has to get going. I'm not sure on your other utilities, Dan.
Yeah, I think everything other than water. I think water might, we need to coordinate with less.
Do you have utility availability letters?
We don't have one to provide today, but we'll be able to get them.
So we typically get, we get utility availability letters that they say that they can service this plan. We don't have any of that yet.
Okay.
And you have to start the planning module process, at least get that rolling.
Yeah, I realize that because this was issued today, you probably didn't, I mean, we wouldn't have had a copy of it in your packets, but I'll make sure that you guys get a, a review letter copy. Yeah, I just, I was wondering why you were asking the individual items and I'm like, oh, right. The packets went out before, so sorry about that.
Dan, also I assume that if they need to extend utilities, there'd have to be some easement shown on these, right, or these sites for potentially sanitary and water then?
Yeah, absolutely, Rob. A good point, yes. I think we have that, we have that in the letter that all easements existing and proposed need to be added to the reported plan.
So they're not showing on here now, so that's another thing.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this is almost, I mean, it's a, it's an advanced conceptual plan, I'll say. I think they know enough how big they want the lots to be, they know that the lots will grade out, but now we need the detail if we're going to approve these lots to make sure that each one can be, have stormwater service, sanitary service, gas, water, electric, all those other things to be available. We need some ENS controls or a typical lot ENS control plan. That's probably the best way to deal with this, it'd just be a typical, you know.
Dan, you had said something about driveways too. Wouldn't that potentially change based on what type of house they build?
Yeah, my only concern is based upon these pads that they say they can get there or the slopes up from the road, are they not too steep? We do have a driveway standard in McCandless in terms of a residential driveway standard.
Okay.
I make sure we don't have, you know, not Washington type driveways coming down to the road.
I have a question. RJ, at this point, do the neighbors who are there on Victory Road, that would be the southern end of this, this way here, because they're, especially the two with the far right, is that a concern because their property is pretty close to where the proposed building is here? Will they need, at what point do they need to be consulted?
So, well, there's, there's no legal requirement to pull in. It's not like the zoning hearing board where you have to post the notice and everything. That's not the case for development plan reviews. However, typically with full land developments, there is at least a notification of the project and that stormwater controls are going to be installed and we do make sure that we get the certified mail postcards as part of the review process. From that, I would have to double check and see if that's been done yet. I don't think it has, but that is something we get for every development.
In the, I think from an impact standpoint, those residents, although their properties are close to, the good thing about it is that the, the way the topography works is everything slopes towards Harmony, so they won't be affected really by runoff or anything else that would occur from those, those lots. And there's a setback, a side yard setback that they have shown on the plan, that nothing to be done within that setback. You see houses that are across the street, they have to be concerned. There's houses. See it on the other side. Yeah.
They're pretty spread out on the other side.
So it sounds like what we're talking about is tabling this.
Table.
Yeah, given the comment letter, I think that's probably a more reasonable move.
Can you get all of your letters and rules in my excellent?
I think we kind of anticipated this thing table before it started dialogue on it and just kind of introduce it more formally and get the very comments on it.
Are there any comments from any of the planning commission members at this point in time?
My only comment is really I want to see continued attention paid to driveways because I'm familiar with this road. My husband driving the school bus on this road, there's been an accident in the school bus on this road, so it's critical.
In the winter?
No, in broad daylight in spring.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, just what Dan said about the driveways, excuse me, needs to be really paid attention to these.
All right. We have a motion.
Is your honor, is your honor familiar with this, familiar with the process in that, you know, like you'd have to put in some of these improvements all upfront or guarantee them?
Yeah, you also, so.
I, this isn't your typical development or are you, are you a developer by?
No, 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 I'm not.
So, so the process is always when, when, when people try to do this on their own, it's a little more like, really, do I have to do all this? And it does get a little more complicated. This one doesn't look super complicated, but if there's a sanitary sewer extension required, MTSA will make you build that sewer, they'll inspect it, you'll have to provide tax reach a lot and I don't know what that'll cost, but they'll want, they'll want financial security on that too, to guarantee it's done. So there'll be like a, probably a development agreement for this that would occur to make sure certain things happen as it goes along, so.
As long as those are fulfilled, then.
Yeah. My only advice to the, to the novice developer is make sure you get all your costs together to make sure that this thing pencils out for you.
Yeah.
You know, I know lots are valuable everywhere, but when you get into the cost of doing things, you just, you know, you never know.
The onsite stormwater retention, that would be something that whoever built, after I sold a lot to a developer or whoever, is that something? Because that would be during the process of actually building the house, correct?
Yeah, we could, we can work that out, but, but I think what, what is, as a minimum, what I'm going to look for a lot to have is a stormwater connection.
Okay.
So bringing in the connection from the main to the, to the lot so that they have a connection and then they can size their sump accordingly for the size of the house that they build.
I know there was a whole new stormwater line run down the street about two years ago.
Right.
So everything's there right in front of each lot.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think that at that time, they didn't put any connect, they wouldn't put any connections.
No, but at least the line, it's actually on that side of the street also.
Sure.
So everything's right there, just need to stop down at each, each lot.
And I would just make sure that, you know, the other utility companies besides, besides MTSA are all aware of what you want to do and they'll provide the services because again, we need letters from those utility companies to say that they can service the lots. Because again, once the town records it or lets you record it, you can sell the lots and we have no other, no other control of that. We, and if somebody can't vote on the lot, then they come to us.
Yeah, they do.
That sounds good to me. Any other comments? Could I have a motion to table?
I just wondered if we should take, see if there's any public comment from any people on.
Is there anybody on?
Well, we've, we've got a couple members of the audience. I think they may be here for the next plan, but just in case they're not, if you would like to provide a public comment and you're over Zoom, you can type in the chat, let us know that you would like to provide comment, we'll pop you up on the screen here. I'll give it a couple of seconds. Don't see anything coming in.
Okay. All right, Dan, can I have a motion to table?
No move, motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is a review of revision to the reserve at Pine Creek subdivision plan, returning from June 1st meeting.
All right, I've got the applicant engineer Tyson Miller on the Zoom here and we also have the applicant, Mr. Josh Adamet here with us. So just as a quick introduction, one loading up the plan here. Last time you all saw this, I believe, was in June. At that time, we had advanced it on for, you know, final cleanup basically to council, but also because the applicant had expressed interest in potentially donating a portion of the property for a major stormwater control project along the creek and, you know, the flood plain, wetlands areas, things like that. So as part of that, there is a parcel that has now been carved out of what you previously saw as the subdivision plan. And because that is a new parcel, it is back here for one more go. Functionally, most of the plan remains unchanged when it comes to the technical aspects, you know, grading stormwater for their actual development and so on. But of course, this whole parcel A right here, which includes the bulk of where we would want to put a flood control pond potentially, and also the frontage along Minor, which previously had been identified for a sidewalk, but they're operating it because the stream, you know, culvert outflow, whatever we want to call it, that runs along here had previously been identified by the town engineers as an area of interest where we could do some flooding control, riparian buffering, you know, restoration, things like that. So, you know, that's, I guess, the other big change is there would not, at the time of development, be a sidewalk added along Minor. However, if the town further studied that area and determined that adding a sidewalk would be appropriate for the water situation there, we could choose to take that. So the last part is there's a little bit more of the parcel A that is not, is not part of the parcel per se, but it is part of the stormwater control area. This is, the plan's kind of split, you all may remember, across two sheets. So this number five here is the biggest state lot at the end. There is a bit more stormwater easement to continue the potential flood control project. Think that's the summary of the major changes unless you guys want to chime in and catch anything I missed?
No, fantastic job, RJ. Thank you.
There you go.
The, as RJ had mentioned, parcel A is approximately six acres and then the easement area in the parcel five. And then there's also an easement area on the, on what I call the low side, but it's north, it's, it's up above lots one, two, three and four on the plan. There's an easement area there as well on the, on the top side of one, two, three and four. So in total, there's approximately just shy of 11 acres that we're offering to McCandless through donating parcel A and then offering easements through the remaining parcels to have the ability to take on, you know, to implement a stormwater management plan. And, you know, as we said before, you know, this, this seems like a great place to do it because it's where the stream enters McCandless Township. You know, the next parcel over is Franklin Town or Franklin Park. So being able to make an impact at the, at right at the beginning of the stream, I mean, will only positively impact all the folks downstream. So, you know, there was a good bit of going back and forth last several weeks with RJ and Dan and Mr. Graham. Thank you guys for, for, you know, taking the time to do that, but I think what we did is we, we ended up, we came up with a good, a good game plan that, you know, allows you guys to go in and, and, you know, implement the strategy to get set for the project.
What is this half block type, you want to bring down the bottom of block 10?
Are you, this, this carve out here?
That's their stormwater pond.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So they'll have a stormwater pond that controls the development and then our pond would be, it's, really what we're trying to do is create flood plain storage in the future there.
But the stormwater pond though is in the flood plain, is that correct?
Theirs is not.
It is outside.
The flood plain kind of follows along.
I thought that dashed line was the flood plain.
I think this is the flood.
Oh, it's out of the floodway, yeah. It's, it is in the flood plain, you're correct, in the 100 year flood plain.
It's in 100 year flood plain.
Is this line here and then the floodway is this little?
So you're going to be digging into that to create a pond, am I correct?
Yeah, and that's, that's okay.
That's okay?
Yes.
And as RJ pointed out, that's, that's unchanged, all of that is unchanged from the previous plan.
As long as they can get a big flood of the creek, that's the most important, that's, that's the only problem with putting flood, stormwater facilities in the flood plain is just making sure you have enough fall to get it to the creek.
Yeah.
It's not going to back up on itself.
I may have missed the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, second thing, how does the water get across to the creek?
Tyson, can you hear that question? How can, how does the water get to the pond?
From lot 9876.
So there's actually a second stormwater management area up near the Hammerhead. So, correct me, there's, there's a bit of a high point, I think, between lots seven and eight. So some of the flow will flow back to the smaller stormwater management area that's kind of within that little knuckle there between the property line and that Hammerhead. And then the balance of it will flow towards the larger stormwater management area on the right. And in, and in addition to that, each lot also has a rock sump, not dissimilar from the application you saw previously here tonight. So the, as part of previous comments, there's a, there's a curb on the low side of that, of that common driveway with inlets that routes the flows to each of those ponds.
Under the road, is that right?
Yes.
That's all I need.
Yeah, the, the stormwater and grading details aren't on this one because it's just the subdivision itself being revised, but those are essentially, I think, like you said, you probably missed that, but they're the same from the last time that you all saw them here.
What about the lower lots, the lots one, two, three, four? What's the water management plan there?
Each of those have their own on lot rock sump. I think, actually, I think lot three and four have a combined system, but generally speaking, as I said, it's rock sumps.
Yeah, there's, there's a little, you can see, there's a lot of line here, but this little hole here that I'm highlighting is the, supposed to be the storm and sanitary line area.
Why is lot four so large compared to lot two and three?
There's some lands on the right side of there.
Ah, okay.
And there were some previous comments from the, from the neighbor and that just basically those two together resulted in, in just making that a larger lot.
We initially had five lots on Pine Creek and the neighbor to the right, his comment was the grading was, you know, close to a house, so we made that one lot and kept the home, keeping the home over to the left, so.
Dan, do you have any?
Well, we still have some remaining comments related to some items that are, that are carryover and we're going to work those out. These, these were same items that we had before when the subdivision plan came through. This plan was sort of in a standstill, so we got this whole issue of the land worked out and how much they're donating. So I spoke to Tyson today, we're going to do a page turn and go over everything together to make sure before it gets to town council that these funnel issues are worked out. We've been talking to them on some geotechnical issues just to make sure that the specifications are good on that. We still had a couple things to clean up on the stormwater plan, so it's all the same comments that we had before when it went through the planning commission. It's just now the plan is going to accelerate the completion because this deal is worked out.
Okay. So you think we can proceed to council?
Yeah, we were to council before.
Yeah.
Nothing's different other than this subdivision plan has changed. That's why I came back to you guys.
Okay.
How, how does it work with their driveway now crossing parcel A with the town owns?
The driveway.
There's a, there's a right away, Rob, for ingress and egress.
Yeah.
So the town will provide a right of way across their, because that parcel A is running up along Minor, right?
I think, oh, I see what you're saying, you mean right here.
Yes.
It's already there, it's on the plan.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 see, I mean, there are a lot of dotted lines.
Yeah, the easement, the easement follows all the way over to the, to the right of my red.
It's this, this line right here, if you can see that, Rob.
Yep.
Strip going up Minor Road.
Let's see if there's a map in there.
Tyson, approximately with that dimension between Minor and the right of way of Minor to the.
Give me a second.
I'll save, if I had to guess, it's about 40 feet.
This right here is 15, so probably maybe 40, 50.
Yeah, it's just shy of 50 feet. I think it's, I can get you an exact dimension if you would like, but it's just shy of 50 feet.
All right, that's close enough.
Is that, is that enough space to do everything you want to do?
Yeah, because what, in reality, what happens is the topography of there gets very steep right outside of this pass there. It dives, this climbs up further, there would be no advantage. It dives, this climbs up further. There would be no advantage to getting any more land along that edge. We primarily planned is to do riparian buffers in there and some pretty some natural channel improvements would be the appropriate thing to do in there.
Who, who will be maintaining that property? You have the town?
Yes.
So the bondsman, I think, I got, based on the minutes, June first, it, it says here in the second page of the, next to the last paragraph that Ms. Susko, Susko explained that when developers put in plans, that they are required to control any stormwater runoff and that their plans created. And, and that their plans created and that potential donation of five acres, which I think we're closer to eleven acres now.
Yeah.
To the town for flood control would not be for the purpose of controlling anything that is caused by this development. Because that is a separate agreement requirement they would have to meet in addition to that is that.
Yes, yeah, that's still accurate.
So they're going to control all their stormwater and a pond here on this side of the, the road and on the other side of the road, which is on the land development plans. And then we're, the town is reserving this ground and the developers willing to donate it. But our hope is that we can develop a plan to improve the floodplain there, that we get more volume in that floodplain to store water. When Pine Creek overflows, it will create a bigger volume of water that we can hold in there. Floodplain storage that will mitigate flooding issues downstream. I mean, there's the potential for, it's like a couple million gallons of water that could be additional water, just taking a foot or two out of there. So that's, that's the idea. We're at the headwater of the creek in the town as far up as we can go. And this is, this is our best potential for, for doing that improvement. And we don't know when we're going to do it. I mean, there's grant funding out there for that. I mean, there's other things that would go along before that project. But securing the land is the most important part of it now and the developers willing to, willing to cooperate.
And this is currently zoned R two. Is that correct? There's, are there any plans to rezone it to?
No, this would, this would all be still R two houses that they built in there.
And the lots are big, I mean.
Yeah.
At least the ones, uh.
No one's on the upper part.
Six through ten are large.
They range from one and a half to nine acres.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments?
I, I just noticed, I look, I look based on Dan's handout that he, they gave to the town council October eleventh. I noticed, and also your letter, I think, mentions the, the stormwater management code nine, nine thirteen point nineteen. And it says about putting, they would have to, someone has to put, well, I, I presumably the developer would have to put a, a deposit in to cover the cost of periodic inspections. And also I, I think if, uh, maintenance, is that, is that right?
That's correct, for their, for their facilities. So when they, when, so what'll, what'll likely happen is the developer will build this, sell the lots, there'll be a homeowners association that'll be responsible for maintenance of that. There'll be an agreement between the town and the homeowners association that the pond has to be developed and they put in escrow money for future inspections. They guarantee the maintenance of it. It's all a part of the more modern stormwater management ordinance we have now that these ponds don't become orphans, that they're, that there, there's responsibility for maintenance in the future.
Okay, it says you get a present value of fine.
Right.
Those costs.
Right.
So basically they calculate out what the labor hours would be for doing those inspections over, I think, the span of ten years. That usually shakes out to maybe four, five thousand. It just depends on the actual stormwater.
And, and maintenance itself?
So the, the agreement doesn't pay for the actual maintenance, generally. It's just inspections to make sure that the maintenance is being kept up with. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And there'll be a, there'll be a federal permit on, there's a couple of federal permits required for this project. And one is an MPDS permit and that also addresses stormwater too. So not only is there the town's requirements, but there's also the requirements of the MPDS permit, which is a post-construction stormwater management plan. And, and in that respect, the HOA is again responsible to maintain the pond through their process also. So there's almost like two layers of control.
Anything else, Greg?
No, thank you.
Brendan?
Is the donation of parcel A going to work? Whether it's a donation or an easement up on Minor Road. I mean, is, is that something that the town is, is actually seriously interested in and sees as a, a net benefit associated with this and it happens to be offered here and we're taking the opportunity? Or is it a, a throw in kind of thing where the town says, well, it could be useful at some point in the future?
So Dan, you jump in if I'm missing anything here, but from my understanding, this land that's, you know, between the easement and the, which, I mean, this part would be, this would be donation. The easement's over more on this side over here going on to the second block. From what I understand, just in general, when the town was looking at stormwater management opportunities, before we were even having this conversation, this area was identified as really a prime target because it's really what I think he said headwaters basically in, in the town. At least equivalently as high up as we can get on Pine Creek. And so, you know, the initial donation discussed was about five acres, but we sat down, you know, brought the, the concept with the developer presenting at the town council meeting in September. And, you know, what this has shaken out to is essentially all of the land that we would have wanted for a flood control project had this developer never, you know, come in and been interested in the property. So from what I understand, you know, this is, this is pretty much our ideal scope for the flood control project. And it fits in between, you know, kind of where they've scoped out the lots at this point. Is that correct?
Yeah, and the town solicitors developing an agreement on the acquisition of this. There's a, there's an agreement as this moves to council on the actual getting the ground. So yeah, they're serious about it. It's, it's, uh, it's definitely in the foreseeable future that something could be done here.
Yeah.
Let me just ask a question, I guess. Along the, is this a private road through here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have sidewalks along the private road?
No.
So it's essentially a, what, what?
A driveway.
Yeah, it's essentially a drive, an access driveway. So this is going to be done through access easements between the whole property.
How about along Pine Creek?
That, yeah, we, we did not wave the sidewalks on Pine Creek Road.
Okay, any other questions?
I do know we have.
We've been watching this one since June as the council.
Okay.
Did you have anything you wanted to add about the parcel?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I think we covered it all. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Are there any, um, public comments?
There sure are. I just got one message from a resident that she wants to know if they're able to comment. Colleen, you are. I will bring you on camera right now. And just to anyone else in the audience, if you would like to make public comment, as usual, type in the chat you'd like to do it. And I'm just going to bring the screen shared plan down so that we can see you in here, Colleen. And just, just give me a chat message if you would also like to provide public comments. All right, take it away.
Thanks RJ. Hi, I'm Colleen Lodge. I live at one zero one six four Sudbury Drive. So I'm in the development that is just above this. So I wanted to speak to just one of the comments that was made regarding the, the land that's being donated. So when, when this came to the planning commission the last time, there was some discussion about putting the sidewalk in to connect up this area to the, to the development that's in, on Sudbury Drive. And there's houses just up Minor Road from here. So, you know, the land, instead of the developer putting the sidewalk in, the land is now being donated to the township. And I don't believe that that land that is adjacent to Minor Road is going to be part of the flood control structure. It's more so put, being donated to the township for the township to have to pay the cost of the sidewalk. So I guess I'm not really confident that there's ever going to be a sidewalk there because it's, it's, um, it's going to just be lumped in with every other, um, every other sidewalk project that's in the township waiting to be done. So I do have a little bit of, I do have a little bit of concern about that. So I just wanted to voice that. And other than that, I, I do think that, that the developer has done a lot of work to try to, you know, listen to the concerns of the local people and so on, but I, I just wanted to make that statement. So thanks RJ. Thanks, everybody.
Um, Dan, I don't know if you have anything at this point to add about the, the stream along Minor. I was reviewing some of the memos that we had put together back in twenty twenty about potentially we could be done on the property. And we did call out that as a riparian buffer opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think that the challenge in the sidewalk along that location is that it would be very difficult to construct. It would require permits from the D E P. There's potential wetlands there that, that would prohibit it from being built. So it is, it is a challenge and the thought there was that if, if it was done in the future, it could be done as a part of a permitting for the entire site and sort of incorporated into an overall plan for that area to be dedicated. So that, that, rather than just putting a sidewalk in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I personally, like, I, I see that there would be a significant value in connecting the neighborhoods. However, I think at the moment, just with the whole situation on the property, given the area of Pine Creek in general, I would hesitate to just immediately move forward with looking at adding more impervious surface in that area, in, in that water source without really, you know, knowing what the whole impact on the property will be yet. Yes, that would mean the town would presumably have to take the cost on the sidewalk. But personally, um, I'm not sure that that's a decision that necessarily we're ready to, to pull the trigger on without further information. That's my thoughts. Colleen just added in the chat that she should have asked if we know for sure that this is a stream.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing my understanding on, that's what it shows up in G I S. It actually shows up as a stream water. So, um.
Anything with that and banks is a strip.
Yeah.
According to D E P.
Yeah.
So, and there's a substantial, pretty substantial acreage, Tyson, that comes down through here, so.
It, yeah, it's less than a hundred, but it's, uh, it's, it is fairly significant, yes.
And just remember, as a part of a, of a project, you know, a grant application could be made as a part of this whole floodplain deal. And you could incorporate, you know, different types of sidewalks. Maybe, maybe it's a little bridge or something that we put in that get over the wetland area or something like that. I mean, I don't, I don't.
Traditional, a trail, you know, there are a lot of options beyond just the.
Yeah.
Three D.
It doesn't preclude the connection, I think, is, again, I'll just reiterate, having land is the most important part. You can always have, you can always develop a plan to make it work.
Um, if anyone from the public watching at home would also like to hop in and make a comment, please type in the chat and let me know now. Uh, we'll give it a little bit of time. Does anyone that is here have anything else on your mind, want to ask any questions?
So I guess to be clear, the area along Minor Road, if, if the town requires that for stormwater improvement, if it's not for clothes, a trail, sidewalk, whatever the case may be, in that same location, but they're not mutually.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would be up to us to decide what would make sense there, but, um, I mean, as far as.
But again, the opportunity is there because of the length we have of land, you know what I mean? That's, and I think the intent here is the, you know, we can, there is money out there for flood mitigation projects and to incorporate multimodal things in it like sidewalks and trails and things like that. It just plumps up on the point.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I mean.
There's, there's a lot of things that we can do.
There are a lot of stormwater grants out there, but there's also grants very specifically geared towards those recreation, you know, active trails and things like that. So maybe that's even an opportunity to combine funding down the road.
Just one thing to add, if you don't mind, I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, there were so many conversations on this, that I think the, the subject came up of possibly doing a walking trail in that area. So, you know, I, those two may go in and even put the trail down Minor and the walking trail through the, uh, through the donated property and sort of, sort of allow it back up. And, you know, I think something that can be, you know, as part of the plan as a whole.
Is there, is there any sidewalk just in the north?
Yeah, I, I believe that, and I, I've got Colleen's piece up in the document.
It doesn't, it doesn't directly.
Right, but it's, it's a bit, it's a bit further up.
Couple hundred feet up. It is, it's not directly.
Yeah.
It does, it does come down Minor. They're coming out of Sudbury. There's maybe four homes.
You're right, it depends, stops.
Three and a half homes or something like that, so. Missing the connection. There is a sidewalk.
I don't see if it is, it's just like, hopefully three houses, yes, and open space and that's three more houses.
Okay.
If I remember the number, it was about a hundred eighty feet to that. From, from the edge of this property to get to the sidewalk.
Do you have anybody else?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't have anyone that has signed up at this point. I'm going to guess that there's been a free use in that time. Hop in, that we are all good.
Okay. Any other comments by anyone here? Okay, in that case. Would entertain a, a motion to recommend to town council to approve and preserve the Pine Creek subdivision plan as revised on September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. I think I read that quite a percent right, did I?
Oh, definitely.
Mostly, I missed a couple words. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by, uh, Rob?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Second by Brendan? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right, opposed? Okay.
We have the, the yes from all?
Yes from all.
Yes from all. All right. Thanks, guys. We, uh, obviously will continue to be in touch as we're getting closer to the meeting date as long as we have enough time to take a look at everything by about midweek prior to the meeting. We should be good.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that was, uh, for, for those watching the recording later, we have the police citizen recounting the next story. There was a little taser action in it, so. All right.
Yeah, think something else, George.
Um, well, so I'll, I'll mention this real quick. I had sent out to everybody, uh, there was a landscaping, a recommended planting guide that I think has been discussed a few times here. The E A C did finish developing that and I think a couple meetings ago, Trish, was it the first October meeting?
I remember, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, council took a look at it, gave it a thumbs up. Again, it's, it's not, you know, a binding zoning ordinance, which I think is the right call because it's, you know, easier to work with the developer rather than have to get a variance over one tree, you know? But that said, developers are typically very able to native plant things to work with municipality on the active species that's being planted, so. Well, I mean, they're native plants. They're. I don't, I, I personally don't think they're ugly. But I, I do think that sometimes we have gotten used to thinking they're natural, you know, native Pennsylvania plants as being when they're actually environmentally friendly. So, you know, maybe there will be some visual shifts and things like, maybe like it's planted on a stormwater pond or whatnot. But I mean, ultimately, they're, they're good trees. And also I got the ginkgo taken out because you never know if you accidentally get a male ginkgo. Yes, I, I've, I've been on the. Yeah, I've been on the receiving end of the municipality accidentally getting a male ginkgo through delivery instead of a female one. That was really fun to the people that live by that tree. So no ginkgos, but otherwise they're, they're all, you know, recommended from different state resources. And it has since been added to the website and will be available for developers to take a look at as well.
They included a deer resistant collar.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
You've been doing that at home.
There's a lot of them that aren't.
So they're eating one of our new trees. So they're eating one of our new trees.
They tried the.
They're always telling you they are.
The only thing.
They're trying the Irish spring.
Yeah, we, we.
They're resistant and then animal's theory.
We have had as many as thirteen deer in my backyard.
So now we can provide people with a list of things that are theoretically nutritious. Maybe not for the hybrid, but we'll see. So unless you all have any comments, that was just kind of a, hey, this is move forward is what it looks like.
Good. Okay, approval of October fifth, two thousand twenty one minutes? Have a motion to approve? Your second, second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
I abstain.
Just to double check, was it Brendan and then Jonathan that did the one two? Yeah, four, no.
We have on your general public comments or any other comments in the public?
Uh, we, we have a couple people still in the audience from home, but they did not sign up previously unless I say something relatively quickly. Assume that they don't have a general comment.
You tell us one quickly.
Usually you give it about a minute. People are pretty quick on. I think we're okay.
These are, uh. Felicity, Dawn, Lee.
Oh, he's still here.
I heard you.
Steve, we need you.
We had a question.
Yeah, yeah.
When the planning commission meets, is there any requirement for a forum to take action?
Yes, there must be a quorum to conduct business.
Okay.
But we can open a meeting, just not take official action if you don't have a quorum. Is that correct, Steve?
Uh, you, you could open the meeting, um, and hope that somebody arrives, but you can't take any action. Um, I mean, I've been in planning commission meetings where they'll let folks make presentations and things without a quorum. But to me, to me, that's a waste because you can't approve it. There's nothing to, to approve, to reject, to table at that point because you don't have a quorum, so.
Yeah, so you could, you could meet, but you couldn't do anything.
Okay.
Um. Well. Before we adjourn, I'll just say, in case, assuming that we have the, the Bowler plan coming back, we will have one more meeting this year. But if we do not, just in case, we'll do, we'll do the whole song and dance again next month. But, um, Rob and Ted, many, many years of fantastic service, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And now you can adjourn if you want.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I may with the adjourn.
Second, second. All in favor?
All right. All right.
We are done.